Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Let's all stand for the fledge. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reprobation for Richard Sanders, one patient on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's do the roll call.
President Donough Dobries.
President.
Vice President Michael Martinez.
Present.
Van Doobie.
Here.
Mike Lanciaoni.
Present.
Rich Young.
Here.
Myself. Attorney Gooding is probably going to be late. Fire Chief Gary Conex is absent. Police Chief Gossakovsky.
Here.
Park Board President Alvin Knight. VDA President Matt Bowman is absent.
Yeah, Gray's absent as well.
Bureau of Commissioner Steve Thomas.
Steve Thomas will be absent.
Okay. Web Content Manager Donough Dobries.
Here.
Present.
Pardon?
Present.
Okay, and Gray's board members.
Okay, we're going to deviate just for a moment here from our agenda. We'll get back to the regular order. I would like to ask Al Wallace of Christopher Burke Engineering to step up because he's going to speak to us about the White Ditch Restoration.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the Michigan Shores. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight. I want to give you an update on the White Ditch Restoration Phase Two project. If you may recall, last year, 2019, the town of Michigan Shores received a grant in the Lake Michigan Coastal Program to do the construction engineering and construction for White Ditch Restoration Phase Two project through a request for proposal process last fall. Christopher Burke Engineers was selected to do the engineering for the project and want to give you just a quick update of the project. I've got four pages down that kind of gives the history of how we got where we are today. The first page is actually the fact sheet that was prepared by the Indiana or the Michigan Coastal Program and summarizes the activities that occurred back in 2003 when there was a grant award to the town of Michigan Shores and a little over $60,000 worth, $60,000 in local match to do what was called the White Ditch Restoration Project. This second paragraph, the middle paragraph of that sheet identifies the goals of the project at that time. It was a joint project between the LaPorte County Drainage Board and the town and the goals were reducing dizziness by designing a stable channel, increasing the channel cross-section, and clearing the channel to reduce flood hazard, preserving existing wetland adjacent to White Ditch, creating a passive park walking trail along the south side of White Ditch, and reducing that point sources of pollution including sediment input from the banks. So as you walk out, certain parts of White Ditch has very steep slopes, you'll notice bare exposed sand and soil and then erosion leads to sediment that's carried into White Ditch and not into Lake Michigan. So one important goal was to start that situation by stabilizing the dams. And in the third paragraph in the first page, it talks about the restoration goals, the tasks that will be accomplished during their work, clearing debris, sediment, secondary growth in the channel, reducing the slope of the new vertical banks to a lower stable slope, stabilizing the newly controlled banks with deeper dented grasses, and then creating a walking path along the trail. So that was, work was done in the early 2000s and that's the work we're looking to duplicate now in 2020. On page two of the handout, as we've applied for various grants through the Lake Michigan Coastal Program, they asked for planning documents that talk about the priorities along the ditch. So on the left-hand side of page two, we included information from the town of Michigan Shores Comprehensive Plan. On page 39 of the comp plan under Environment, item one referred to the major existing undeveloped area within the town includes that border in White Ditch. This area was singled out in the comprehensive plan in 1982 and recommended for development of the park area. The present opinion certainly strongly indicates that this goal should be pursued in the form of restoration of the street and incorporation of facilities conducive with a park-like atmosphere. So back in 1982, and then reaffirmed later 2016 to talk about the town's desire to have a walking trail along White Ditch. On the right-hand side of the page, we have from 2016, Michigan Shores Land Management Plan. Through open public process, the town puts together several priorities on how to manage public resources and one of those encircled by the pink box talks about extending the work that was done along White Ditch, reconstructing, stabilizing, stabilization of further section of White Ditch. So we just want to kind of show the documentation of the past of different planning documents that speak to the work that we're doing this year. Page three of the handout, we just wanted to do kind of a historical summary of four different grants that the towns obtained over time from Lake Michigan Coastal Program. The light blue line shows the location how White Ditch meanders from the southwest corner of Michigan Shore through the center of town and then out through the northeast corner. The yellow dash line represents the Lake Michigan Coastal Program Grant Number One in 2003 that was Phase One of White Ditch within Michigan Shore stabilized approximately a third of the ditch, about 1,250 of the 4,700 feet. In the Grant Two in the purple on the bottom left, in 2016, the town received a small grant to do the Public Land Resource Management Plan. As the town was trying to get funds to do more construction work on the ditch, the DNR Coastal Program advised, they would only consider grants if there was a recent resource management plan done, so we can grant funding to do that and that was completed in 2016. In the upper left-hand corner, left-hand side of the page in the light orange box, we have Lake Michigan Coastal Program Grant Three approved in 2017. That was Phase Two of the White Ditch Reconstruction within Michigan Shores, proposed in about another 1,700 feet of ditch restoration. So then that would get us to about two-thirds of the length of White Ditch going through town. And then kind of in the center of the pink box, we have Lake Michigan Coastal Program Grant Number Four that was received in 2018 and the work was done last year was for White Ditch Repair and Corridor Restoration Project. And if you recall, that was the work done by Applied Ecological Services last year to come out to an inventory of the vegetation trees along the south side of White Ditch on property that's owned by the town. So that work was completed last year. We also submitted a grant last fall to do the construction associated with that restoration. We made it through the initial Phase One, the pre-proposal. We were authorized by the Lake Michigan Coastal Program, the town was, to submit the full proposal and unfortunately, we just found out yesterday that the grant application for restoration work was not approved by the Coastal Program. Part of the reason for the not accepting the grant was they had a significant number of grant applications this year, a lot more dollars were requested than grants, and they were not able to fund that restoration yet. So we'll continue to look for other grant possibilities to try and implement that restoration plan that was done by Applied Ecological Services. And then the last page kind of focuses again on the work we're doing this year with this restoration work. You can see, you're probably a little familiar, the lower right-hand part of the page on page four, there's a photo of the Phase One completed work where we have a nice sloping bank of the south channel of White Ditch with a walking trail on top. And in the lower left-hand corner of the page, in the red box, we have a photo of what we're going to be working on this year, Phase Two. You can see very steep banks, a lot of exposed soil, so that's the bank we're going to repair. We'll be removing material to make photo two resemble photo one. With a sloping three-to-one bank, the restoration work will involve removing material, taking it off-site, and then vegetating it with a walking trail on top. So last fall, I sent you the request for proposal process. Christopher Burke Engineering was engaged to do the design engineering. We started that work last week. We had a surveyor out from House Associates to get some data points on how the current bank is. We should have the drawings done within the next couple of weeks and then I'll be able to bring them back to the town council. And once we get the Michigan Coastal Program approval, we'll get this, look at the project early spring and construct the project late spring or summer. So that's a quick synopsis just for everyone to get a history of us and how we got where we are and some of the key assets that we'll be doing with the work.
Thank you. Are there any questions for comments?
So, over going, please call Michigan.
If this White Ditch goes into the state of Michigan, I'm not sure what the...
Oh, White Creek.
Okay.
Ever since I've lived here, over 20 years, I've, why did it call the ditch? To make it look nice and be White Creek. And I'm sure the engineers, Mr. White, didn't original to appreciate it.
Heard that it might go back to the fact that it's an official legal drainage, it's a county drainage ditch within the state of Indiana, so most of those legal drains have a connotation of ditch association with it, that could be part of the reason?
Indiana, yeah.
That is Indiana, so it's called the ditch. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments or questions? Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We proceed to the minutes and I have noted only the minutes of January 14th meeting and then the executive session and work session. However, Joan has also provided us with the minutes of the December 27th meeting of the Michigan Shores Town Council, so I'm going to stick that in, I'm going to insert that right about the regular meeting of January 14th for approval. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at those minutes? The meeting of December 27th. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes?
They were emailed, late, but they were emailed.
Yes. No questions from anybody with regards to that? I will enter the motion to accept the minutes.
I will.
Okay. So Mike Lanciaoni has moved and who seconded him?
No, I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear it, so...
Oh, you did not get them?
No.
For the December 27th, I passed you.
That's okay, huh?
Somebody goes to...
Here's a copy over here. Here, here documents over here in case you need them. Here we go.
Okay, you got a motion?
Okay, I have a motion. Second, Michael Martinez. All in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Okay, five ayes. Minutes are accepted. Let us move now to the minutes of the regular meeting which took place January 14, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to go over those minutes? Are there any comments or any questions, any corrections? Okay. Do we have a motion then? Can a motion to accept the minutes is read?
One more.
Okay, Rich Young, seconding?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. All approved, the minutes are accepted, is read. Now...
Five ayes.
I'm sorry?
Everyone voted aye.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Yes, we did, aye, it's five ayes. Okay, now we move on to the minutes of the executive session. Okay, which took place January 28. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at these minutes? If not, then please... Please read them now.
Well, wait, keep typing.
Yes.
I'll move to approve those.
Is everybody finished, Lanciaoni?
I'll second it.
Okay, Rich Young seconds, Michael Lanciaoni moved to accept. Rich Young seconded. All right, I'm just checking. Now, I call for motion. Okay, you've already moved to approve all of it. And then what we are going to do is not only approve it, but certify these minutes that no subject matter was discussed at this meeting outside of the subject matter that was posted on our agenda. Okay? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All approved, five votes of aye, all approved. Okay. So at this point, I believe we can move on to our agenda and adapting the meeting agenda.
Do you want to adapt the meeting?
I mean... We did.
The work session?
We did. Oh, the work session, oh there. Thank you so much for reminding us, okay, the work session. Here we go. All right, now for the work session, I don't believe Mr. Gooding said that they had to be approved because this was written as a memorandum.
We always approve the...
Even, even a memorandum? Okay.
As POA.
Okay. All right, so everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes of the tray or memorandum[984.56][984.56]/ minutes of the training workshop? Do you need a copy? Who needs a copy?
Yeah.
Here we go. Mike and Michael, I think you've got yours? Yes, okay. Okay. Is there anyone still reading? Okay, can I intervene a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the training workshop?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Michael Lanciaoni moved to approve. Anybody seconding?
I'll second.
Michael Martinez seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye, five ayes. Minutes were approved, because read. All right, so now we can move on to the agenda. Please take a look at the agenda and let me know if there's anything you would like to add or you do need from the agenda. If you have any notes or anything to...
Stop it too long.
Can we go on or are you all stuck? Do you prefer that we vote on the agenda or just leave it the way it stands? Okay, we're leaving it the way it stands. Thank you. At this point, if we had any, we would do presentations or awards. I do have one thing where I wanted to bring in and perhaps I should have said that a few moments ago. There was a resolution and we have a section for ordinances and resolutions, but the resolution I was speaking would like to present is one that has to do with the League of Women Voters. And this resolution would be, I'll do a quick little intro here, I've got something printed, you can all find it online, but I don't know how many of you are aware of the fact that the League of Women Voters is also celebrating a 100-year anniversary, you know, since its inception. And it was organized in Chicago on February 14th in 1920, actually six months before the emancipation, you know, proclamation, I mean, before that was approved, before the vote went through. So I think this is really awesome. A woman named Kiri Chekinket is the founder of the League of Women Voters. So I do have a resolution that I think would be great for our town to sign and proclaim that we are very happy to celebrate the 100 years together with the League of Women Voters. So I'm going to speak, read this very quickly, okay? Whereas on February 14th, 1920, the League of Women Voters was formed at the Congress Hotel in Chicago. Whereas the League was formed six months prior to, but in anticipation of ratification of the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote in the United States. Whereas the League was a political experiment designed to help 20 million women carry out their new responsibilities as voters by educating them about issues. Whereas from the beginning, the League determined that it would be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any political party or individual candidate. Whereas the League continues today as a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Whereas the League is composed of members in over 700 local, county, and state leagues in all 50 states, plus the District of Columbia, the Virgin Islands, and Hong Kong. Whereas among those states and leagues is the League of Women Voters of Indiana. Whereas among those local leagues in Indiana is the LaPorte County League. Whereas members of the League first study and then take action on a broad range of issues after reaching consensus on positions. Whereas leagues at all levels, among other activities, register voters, educate voters by holding candidate forums and publishing voter guides, publish public policy research and hold meetings on key issues. Whereas the League is a civic organization that has fought since 1920 to improve government and engage everyone in the decisions that impact their lives. Whereas the League will celebrate its 100th anniversary on February 14, 2020. Now therefore, the town of Michigan Shores declares February 14, 2020 as a date to celebrate the League of Women Voters and its vision of a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The end.
What did you title that?
This is the, it's a resolution to celebrate, I'll give you a copy right here. There we go, I'll give you, I'll give you that to keep us a copy. The resolution is celebrate the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. So I believe this is something that we must have a motion to pass. So I will intervene a motion to pass the resolution. Okay. Michael Martinez moves. Who will second our motion to celebrate the League of Women Voters? Rich Young, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Five ayes, the motion, the resolution has passed.
I'd like to acknowledge that one of the local townspeople, Lady Black, brought that to our attention, so special thanks to her for...
Yeah, she's, yes, and in fact, I thought that she was going to be here with us tonight. I was at the League of Women Voters luncheon today, so, because I thought they were pretty good, we can hang out, but so, anyway. And yes, Nadia Black is one of the officers for the LaPorte County League of Women Voters. All right, let's move on with our agenda. So the sixth point, reports from committees, officers, and the clerk treasurer. Joan, do you have anything for us on job descriptions?
Job descriptions, we haven't had time to forward, do any more with them. We'd like to get it done enough, so by the time we have the next meeting, they'll be in for them.
Okay.
We'll list the exact duties of each job description. Then we can go from there.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're hoping they'll be ready by our March meeting. Okay. Also, I'm going to refer to Joan Lewis, our clerk treasurer, regarding invoices and claims. Thank you.
I've done something a little bit different, I'm just going to show the money that come out of the funds. Under the general fund, we have $5,783.93, local roads and streets, $351.35, parking wreck, $9.49, refuse collection, $3,307.20, the riverboat, $3,555.67. And for the grant fund, $1,593.75, where a grand total of $14,958.39.
Are there any questions coming in?
You only fifty, almost eight hundred dollars? I know that, I guess that includes like your phone bills and all that. Why is that?
The general, the $5,783 approved, all the general expenses.
Well, what makes it over $5,000?
The fire department, they're paying to Long Beach Country Club, I mean, Country Club. Maybe that's what they use for, I don't know. But, yeah, Long Beach. Supplies in there, a little bit of everything. If you want a breakdown, come to the office, I'll give you a breakdown.
And when it says riverboat fund? The $35,555.67?
I think that was some legal expenses.
Oh, so it's from that fund? Okay.
Yeah, it's from that fund. If you want the breakdown, I'll go back to doing the breakdown, so you make up your minds what you want. Last month, you seem to think it was two, okay? But all the others.
I would prefer they have a breakdown.
A breakdown. Even if we don't read all of them out loud, it would probably be good to have a breakdown. I don't know how a lot of people spot it.
Have the breakdown on a second sheet and read the, read the funds like you just did Joan, and then get the backup to your report.
Yeah, that sounds great.
The one that you're talking about is for legal fees.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And then there's also one for membership.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that was a good suggestion, thank you. Well, having the general one that we discussed like this with the explanation on a sheet underneath just for individuals to look at on the wall, then we don't have to read through all of it at the meeting.
Why don't we need the top sheet? Because it'll all be on the front sheet. Only...
Well, if you have the total or something like this, it was good to have the totals so that we have a just sort of a general idea.
To the general point is just if you have the subtotals or the totals, we can see the itemized...
There are, yeah, set up in the computer.
Excellent.
It's computer done, I can't set, change how they're printed. You either get it printed the way I gave it last month, or you get it off there, or you can get all the appropriations in the middle. There's only three ways to print this with our system. And I don't make impressions.
Both of the extreme like if I reading just the bigger amount.
Yeah, we could...
Read all that.
The bigger amounts are usually ones that are the same. Fire, police.
Sometimes it's property owners and stuff. I don't care if you do it the way you did it this time, but I want to vote, I would prefer the old one.
Well, I think that everybody liked seeing them, we just didn't think that we needed to read through every single itemized, you know, expense because we don't need to be able to see that it's $9.49 for the lights of the park, you know, that's gonna be...
Naming ways, you know, the one, the two, the three, the four, the one, the two, the three, the four, whatever, that's up to your responsibility, you've got to be signing this.
Yes, I understand that, but like, for instance, the sheet you did last time was great, except that the only thing, and I'll repeat again, is that what we had said is let's read only the biggest expenses, you know, out loud, so that we don't spend that much time on the smaller ones. That was the only thing, but I think that the spreadsheet, I mean, the way you put it out was wonderful last time around. Thank you, Joan. Let's move on to annual appointments of commissioners. Michael, can you help me out on that one?
I don't know.
Oh, you're still doing, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have cashed around on the last meeting, the tax forms that need to be filled out and signed if you want to get paid, I only have two of them, but... I only have two of them, but if you want to get paid March 31st, you better have it been long before March 31st, because I gotta enter all that stuff in the computer.
Okay.
I need a garage inventory. Bob can't do it, maybe one of you can do it. I have to have it for SBOA.
Okay.
That's one that came out, that's odd.
Yeah, the open one that was submitted, so I can just add to it?
I have no idea where it is. You never submitted them to me, that was done before, so why don't you just go through the garage? There shouldn't be anything in there that's not ours. I don't care how many hammers or crew lighters you have, we're talking about. Your saws, and, who comes with that? You have several laundry equipment in there.
Joan, by when do you need this inventory?
I took this away, I have it done by the inventory, but it doesn't look like it's gonna get done.
Bob, is there any date that's good for you, when some of us can come over and help if you need?
I submitted one several years ago, my computer crashed since then, so I don't have a copy, so I guess I gotta reinvest the, start over from scratch.
Okay. All right, but let us know if you need help.
I sent you a form, SBOA suggests you need, has it all filled out, and what you need. If you could have the guess at the date it was purchased, or if it's obsolete, just put obsolete on it.
We'll resubmit, resend that when we go higher.
Okay, I'm through. Thank you very much, Joan. All right, annual appointments of commissioners. Michael Martinez, could you please read some of the notes we put together?
Yes, for the building commissioner, we have Steve Thompson.
Thompson.
Thomas, police commissioner, Bob Zokowski, road commissioner, Bob Zokowski, flood planning administrator, Ray Dumbriz. For those four that I mentioned, this will be for the remainder of the year, these commissioners will hold their role, pending job descriptions. And then with the town attorney, we have Jeffrey Gunning, we will have him appointed for the foreseeable next six months.
Okay. Thank you. And now, council liaison appointments. Can we have some of, we have a sheet for you? Yes.
Well, a sheet, totally, I don't know.
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, no, no, we will have that for you right away.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, and the next is council liaison slash contacts.
For the town attorney, Diana Dumbriz, building commissioner, Mike Manzioni, police commissioner, Michael Martinez, road commissioner, Rich Young, fire commissioner, Pam Dooley, flood planning administrator, Diana Dumbriz, and water commissioner, I don't believe we had a role or a person filled for this position, and hence, we have nobody as a liaison either at this point.
We haven't had one since we've been with Michigan City.
So, that is a question, is this a needed position? Someone mentioned this to us, which is why it's included here. Mike? Absolutely.
Thank you.
If something happens, I think somebody from the town will then have to, you know, address issues, because we have a contract. How much longer is the contract good for the water?
About 48 years.
Forty-eight years?
Maybe 47.
Well, then we may not have anything to discuss. Or at least, we won't have anything to discuss.
Usually, the landlord or property owner around the, where the land problem modifies, or the city, they have their own property. On the handout, if you have new residents, it tells them on the contract to water.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we can just own it, then leave that an empty then? Did you finish the other one?
Representing the town, representing to NIR, PC, Bada Dumbriz, Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission, and also LaPorte Drainage Board, Bada Dumbriz as well.
Thank you very much. All right, bring these, that's the same one, it's on the bottom of the sheet that we just gave you. See? Oh, yes, it does, I was saying.
It's yours, right? It's your two.
Just mine too, we're at it over there, just because. What was the one that was, anyone to see that one?
Please, I have a good idea.
Okay.
You want to give me the list of the points also?
Yes, yes. Here we go. This one? All right, thank you very much. Now, we move on to the next commissioner reports at this point now. So, police report, please.
In the month of January, 2020, full dispatch, call, 127, 23 people came to the station, we drove 3,858 miles. Full hours worked with 775, three hours of overtime, reserve officers were 20. There's three traffic stops in Michiana Shores, one brick warning, two verbal warnings, one suspicious subject, and two alarms for the month. The only report we had was one residential entry, it was a medical. Residential entry is not, is whether somebody breaks into the house, but nothing is stolen or nothing is disturbed in the house. Burglary is when they break in and steal. What he did is been in there and spent the night. And it probably, it could have been a couple months ago, since they've been in the house.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief. For the fire, did the fire chief leave any word?
Yep.
$27.48 were spent during the month. Meetings, 28 was a business meeting, 22 was a training meeting, 29th was a general meeting. Calls were serviced for the month, on the 3rd, Miami Trail for a medical call, the 11th, Amalai Court for a medical call, the 12th, Pau Hatten Trail for a medical call, the 17th, Sunset for a medical call. So, calls for Michiana Shores was one fire, my first responder in Michigan was one fire, elevation, one first responder, and no mutual aid calls. A new addition to our station is now complete, we have ordered a new 6,000 PSI compressor system to fill our self-entained breathing system models. That's about $30-some thousand plus compressor, so. That's in the report.
Okay, but you're already getting, is the fire department getting some kind of grant from the state for that maybe? Nothing? Thank you for the reports. All right, building commissioner, Steve Thomas is not here. He did notify me, he said he was surprised by his two daughters, who came up from Purdue to join him, because today's his birthday, so they made a surprise to take that out, and they didn't think about our town meeting. So, Steve has no new permits to report on, is what he said to me, and he's been following up on some places where something has been noticed with regards to either equipment being left behind, or materials are there to follow up and make sure that whoever it is will be applying for the points. Park board?
We don't read, in the meantime, so, but, I mean, twice ago, I sold that in my garage, and I haven't heard any, then, probably.
All right, well, we keep trying on that. Okay, thank you, darling.
We put it in the, the dump.
Yes, the next door. Mm-hmm, but I'll do it again, you know, to ask. Okay, thank you very much. Road commissioner, please. Bob?
For the month of January, full hours worked was 17. Not much known.
Okay, thank you.
What about the CCK room?
Oh, community crossing grant?
Nothing to report.
Pardon?
Nothing new to report.
Nothing new?
Have you applied for?
No, I've got the April reply, yeah.
Hey, Bob, we've got a mission at last, making a run, and some of the signs around town that are like, far in the hood.
I guess you could get ahold of me, I've got probably, I see it on the agenda here later, I've worked a whole slew of signs.
Okay.
And we're just slowly getting through them.
And one, the stop sign at the corner of Porto Brookside, because I go by it every day, it's like leaning at like a 60-degree angle out into the road, so. And then the one in the corner of Brookside and Road, one I think, it all fits, and then for tree pit, I'm sure there's more, but those would be good to get fixed sooner rather than later.
Anyone else, Tom? No, thank you. All right, plant commission report, now Howard is not here, it's very difficult for him to come on this Tuesday, and otherwise, Ray may have done our presentation or done the report for you, but Ray is ill today, so he can't be here. Anyway, there's plant commission meeting notes, I don't know if you want to hear my voice again, or somebody else read this out for the plant commission meeting. Anybody else want to read? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So, the plant commission met last Tuesday, and there were like five items of note, I'll just have summarized those, but the discussed the permit for a new bill, Dan Coffey, the Coffey Department property, which is over at the corner of, or is that Pau Hatten?
Check.
Yeah, right there. So, there's still some ongoing discussion on that. And they didn't formally present, they're gonna wave that next to coming meeting, I believe that's what they're on draft for. We have some discussion on the building permission fees for the State Board of Accounts, there were some discrepancies in the way that our building permit is worded, there's calculations for square footage, and then for total dollar value. The remedy, it was determined was to just include two additional appeals on the form that lists out specifically what the total square footage, what the total dollar value of the project are to remedy that. And then Joan, I think you're gonna apply SBOA of that solution. There's an amendment that is under way for the comprehensive plan, in alignment with the short-term rental ordinance that we read last week in our first reading. There actually has to be some adjustment to the comprehensive plan to allow for the short-term rentals, because the current comprehensive plan does not afford that option, and so there needs to be some verbiage tweaks that will make that an acceptable use within our town, as noted in the plan. There was additional discussion then on the short-term rental ordinance itself, with some other, some tweaks combined including on some of the verbiage. And then lastly, the issue of unsafe house items raised, and how to approach a solution. And work has begun on a resolution to the problem of the formal support flow that was tabled, and will be addressed in balance at the next meeting.
Thank you.
You have a copy of what you want, this SBOA?
Well, you know, we don't have that, we'll give you the form, I'll have to give you the form for that, okay? That's just a, unless you want a copy of the report, our regular report, this is the plan meeting. Okay? Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next would be the BZA, the White Ditch on the website, and since I'm reporting for everybody today, I will give you all of them at once. There is no BZA meeting scheduled for this, there was a BZA meeting scheduled for this Thursday, however, there is no business up before the BZA, and I'm not quite sure whether or not they're going to meet or not. The only thing they would do is decide on who has what office to determine who is actually, should be either replaced or renewed, with regards to their position on the BZA. But I have not heard differently from Matt. White Ditch, nothing to report, nothing new for the drainage board, and regarding the website, just the regular updates that I put on it, there's nothing new for the website right now. So, we will move on then to ordinances and resolutions. We already did the League of Women Voters, I wanted to get that out of the way, and now we have ordinance number 2020-01, the short-term rental regulations. Is there any information that we want to add, discuss with regards to?
Yes, ma'am, president. I have previously talked about.
Thank you.
Amending the ordinance itself.
Please, have to be.
And as an initial matter, we would need to have sort of the standard provisions for ordinance enacted. And what I've passed out to you presently is something to accomplish those ends. So, when I'm finished with my overview, I would ask if there'd be a motion to amend the ordinance in the form presented. This starts off with a whereas provision that says the town council of the town of Michiana Shores passed a draft ordinance proposal number 2020-01 to second reading by approving a first reading of ordinance 2020-01 on January 14th, 2020, intending to establish short-term rental regulations in and for the town of Michiana Shores, consistent with the Indiana Code 36-1-24. I wrote this up in the form of ordinance, but a motion wouldn't need to be this formal. But the amendments that I'm requesting tonight would be, the first list of, throughout the ordinance is the terminology of the common council of the town. Indiana law bestows that title to a city council, and so I would just ask that those references be replaced with the reference to the town council. We will need to add legislative history, which will be usually at the end after the signature lines, that just states legislative history on enactment of this size, since we didn't do it either the first night that it was presented, and anticipate additional work. So, that would show first reading and first reading approval on January 14th, and then amendments containing standard provisions, February 11th. The next item would be to add a repeal, or some refer to it as a supremacy clause provision, a severability provision, some people refer to that as a second ability provision, an emergency enactment provision, a publication provision, adoption language, and signature lines. So, although, I would anticipate the existing text of the ordinance to be re-formatted into section one, primarily including the purpose statements, and then section two, which is actually the text and the content. That section contains reference to the appendix, which also you've all reviewed, and was included in your first review. That would be, or allow the numbering for section two, which is the repeal of conflicting provisions, these are all standard provisions, by the way. Section four is that severability provision, in case somebody does take this to court, that allows, requires the judge to, they call it the pencil rule, to use a pencil and strike out only those phrases, or words, or provisions, or sections that are objectionable, or unconstitutional, or illegal. Section five would then be the emergency enactment clause. I try to put this into all of our ordinances, even though they don't necessarily carry the weight of a true emergency. One of the reasons that I've always done that, I've tried to interest past town councils into a system of posting. Part of our due process obligation is to provide notice on most of the things that we do, that's we engage in most of our activity in public meetings. There's a provision that allows our ordinance to go into effect, it has to be published then on the date of publication, or if you have a posting allowance or ability in your community, the posting rule is generally like this. If you have five different places in town where you can post the ordinance, then that can substitute for the publication, unless it's the publication under rules and fees. So, we could enact an ordinance, not this one, and post it at those five places. Some communities are set up, such as the town of Some communities are set up, such as the town of Austin Dunes, where they have community mailbox areas. And they have created at the community mailbox area, as it worked out, one for each ward or political district in their town, has at least one posting board. So they would escape some of the publication costs by posting it. That's something I've hotfought in the past. I'd urge past councils to look into it. As a general matter, it hasn't seemed to be real practical, but it's something we can still work toward into the future. But in certain instances, you can declare an emergency and then have the action, particularly if it's an important matter, go into a faster effect. This does have under Section 6, the publication requirement. So I'd like to put that onto the ordinances so that we don't overlook it. Because there have been instances in most communities in the past where they've done everything right, except they've got to publish it, and then they get to the point of enforcement and that becomes an issue. The adoption language is that which you see below. And then I typed up the signature lines with the current officers listed or designated, the council president, vice president. Check that out. If you prefer the use of a middle initial or a more formal designation of a first name, or if there's a title, a sir or your second, if you want to add it, let me know. And we'll try to include that as we go along. But for tonight's purposes, these are the sole amendments that I would like to enact. And then I think going forward to reformat, I think there's a substantial lot of work. What I anticipate doing is over the next couple of weeks, actually doing that and running that past the author of the ordinance. And then come up with a final document for second reading.
Can you send me the electronic version of this? I'm sorry. Send me the electronic version of this and I'll incorporate that and send it back to you.
Okay. I have two different Word processors. I have one that's a Word processor, this was on the Word processor. Either have to be typed in or out. You wanted to perform more than scan, so you would just...
Yeah, okay. I'll get that done. Thanks, man.
Any other questions, President, to return? And then this is something that we're going to consider a motion that we will need to entertain now to pass this, to add to the ordinance, correct?
Correct. This is a motion to amend.
Motion to amend, okay. Can I ask someone?
I'll move to accept a motion to amend as submitted by the town president.
Do I have a second?
This is the second.
Okay. Okay, second. So we have a motion to accept the amendments for the document as presented to us by Mr. Gunning, regulating short-term rentals, the ordinance regulating short-term rentals. Is that okay? And the second is Michael Martinez. Okay, thank you. Any... Everyone in favor? Aye. Okay, anyone opposed? No? All five ayes? The motion is approved?
That's all I have. I didn't know if you had anything that you wanted to present tonight. There was some discussion of maybe having a portion of tonight's meeting for the purchase of... For the public period of input. So it appears we'll do that on second reading.
Unless we have public comment right now, since we are discussing this here. Or does anybody have something they'd like to add? And if you do... Oh, goodness, I forgot. I have a sheet. I will still pass it out to you to sign in that you're here at the meeting. But if you do have a comment to make, please stand up, state your name, and then, you know, express any thoughts you might have with regards to the short-term rentals.
Several comments. I stopped by and talked to John the other day to see what version of the document was available. If someone walked in the door and wanted to review it. And that document is the one that was from the first reading. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. It is not the document that's currently on the table for potential review. I don't know if that's an issue or not, but the only way for the public to get it would be to get an old outdated document.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any other comments? We will then endeavor to put a newer copy into the office. Michael, you... We can put one in that's current and then add another one with this new... With the new motion added to itself, because they can get this one first. Okay? Thank you for that comment. Anybody else? Okay. Then let us move on to grants. John, do you have any news on other grants or is that it for our grant meeting today?
He did everything on it.
Okay.
That we are doing a final, what they call, report, which includes everything on the grant. On the day that started, probably till the day close, including the invoices, all the paperwork. And Bob needs to do that on the CCG grant also. Can you hear me, Bob?
Last year's grants are done. Last year's grants are done.
They're done.
Last year's grants are done.
I have... You can give me the final grant that shows all the paperwork.
You're yelling every time I send you something with a grant. I don't know what you want, but you do.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right. We have some unfinished business to attend to. One thing is the refuse contract. What is our news on... Is there any other news on the refuse contract? Rich, have you heard any more from them?
Nope.
Okay.
Then our next step would be to actually publish our legal... The legal ad comes in the form of invitation bits and proposals. Campaigns move a section announcing that it's a three-year contract. It is written with specifications that will be available in the clerk treasurer's office. In the past, there have been two garbage pickup companies, Lake Shore Disposal and our current provider, that we issued copies of the specifications to. I guess the only... The only questions are really for the clerk treasurer, the legal notice and the existence of specifications that allow us not only those two companies, but any other trash haulers in the area or interested in expanding, pick up those specifications and there have been submissions.
I have a quick question.
Yes, say it.
Rich, when's the last... When's the last time we had anybody over there?
Before the last meeting, I reported last meeting that they... His bosses, Jim Batrom and Nick Charles, that they wanted a three percent increase to cover. Because we have not paid them for this in three years, I believe.
But there's been a formal like communication then that says three percent or just all...
John, did you get anything? I didn't get anything, but I understand we can't extend that contract, can we? If we put...
Right, not with the increase. We can only extend the contract at...
The increase you've been into the dam like cost of living percentage or...
No, no, we have to read that.
Is there one that you named, the one that's on a mission?
About Lake Shore? I think that's where they were from.
Does anybody know anybody with that company?
It's easy enough to find out. If I send them the notice for those specs. Was RFP, so... Waiting to find out if they're still in business.
Okay, I haven't been able to see it.
Okay, then I can give their address.
What's the total cost per year for the refuse in the awards?
I believe it was 56 or 58,000.
58,000.
It's... I'll give it to you last minute. Hold on, you can figure that out.
And then in the past, I know that the council has entertained potentially adding or requesting different kind of services. People complained about trash receptacles being left at the curb and so forth. Are there any things like that that they're willing to change or buy or...
The specifications do ask for an alternate quote.
Okay.
The last thing did, but we never sent it out. It's $3,667 a month.
Okay. So then at this point, we need to get ready to send out the... The... In other words, a request for bits, correct?
Right. The only real question is the procedure for the invitation to bid designates a deadline for bid submission. In the past, we've tried to... We considered alternatives of having a bid opening in the middle of the day on that same day so that they could then be compiled and presented to the council. I don't think we've ever used that, but we've talked about it. And then the other is the timing on submission. If we don't do something like that, to accommodate our situation here. So what we've done in the past is to allow a deadline of 7:00 P.M. That allows somebody to walk through the door with a set of bids. Or we can before put it in the drop box. And that's the only means of getting those communicated. The bid process is one where they're sealed bids and proposals until they're open. They're being opened and read aloud. There's a bid opening meeting that doesn't require a court, but obviously no action to be taken. That requires usually the clerk treasurer's presence. And then if those be opened and read aloud, often but not always, companies will send people just to write down all the bids and see how they compare with them. If there be more than one. So that, I guess, is the only specification that we have to determine. And we will probably do the add this week or next.
Okay. Can this be done, this kind of a meeting be done immediately before the next Town Council meeting? Or are we pushing the envelope that it would be too late? I don't know how much time you give for... How much time is given for that bid to be, I guess, answered, returned?
Well, you have the bid opening. In the past, when we've actually gone through the bid process, I think there's a determination made on the spot at that meeting, which we would virtually have to do unless we rebid and ask for, you know, a month-to-month extension from our provider.
Okay. But so how much time do we need and when should we do this?
Well, the legal publication, the state's...
Okay. And then after that, how many days? Can we do this, like I said, can we do this bid opening at the next meeting for the Town Council? Or does it have to be done at another time?
It'll have to be at the next meeting.
Okay.
Unless you set up a special meeting before.
I would think, let's just do it that same.
Then we have to look at...
We can start with that.
But the timetable would be for the newspaper to run the ad.
Okay, thank you. So John, will you be able to get that add-on for us, please? Thank you very much. Okay. The second topic had been short-term rentals, but we've already looked at that unless you have something to add, Mike. No? Okay. So then we move on to... This is something that had been worked on earlier and we discussed in the past, the wooden debris removal from public property. How has that gone? Does anybody have a report or does anybody know with what happened with all of that work? Was it completed? Is it still left hanging?
There's a tree that needs to be taken down, a big tree.
Yes.
Very large tree. And then Sandcastle gave us a bid on some... There's several other trees that are down now and they need to be removed. And there was some more debris that needs to be removed. And Sandcastle gave us a bid on that.
And are there any ones again?
We didn't request one. They just went ahead and gave it to us.
Okay.
If you put on a bid, you're not going to get anyone cheaper.
I think you should put it out to bid, right? You have to do bids on that too, but I mean, there's a...
If you're going to put it out to bid, then someone better circulate the town and mark where you want it down. That's what happened the last time. That they only get one part of it the last time. They just did the part on...
Brookside?
Brookside. Everybody else didn't get anything.
What about all the ones that are marked that they never got to? Has he been paid for all of them?
No, because it wasn't on the bid. That one in...
No, the one that I... That we determined needed to be cut down. They were all marked.
Yeah.
They were all tagged.
They all were not cut down because somewhere it's on private property.
One was on private property. The other one was on the town.
I was told there were several, so I would go out there and check it. But anyway, since Sandcastle is not going to be taking down some of these trees that was originally in his bid, there could be some type of agreement with him to finish taking down the ones he bid on.
Has he been paid for all of that already? Not yet? No?
No.
All right, so he needs to be contacted, okay?
There wasn't even a word of the work. There's several trees that need to come down. They need to be taken care of.
Yeah, he was the one that voted.
Which one?
It was the last one that we submitted.
Council never voted on that one.
Rich?
Did you?
No, we didn't.
I don't have that on my record. I must have been asleep.
For the I, I should say there were a couple of trees that were on private property. The one that he didn't get is one, what? She had one in Powhatan. I think just north of the creek on the east side.
That's that... That lot that town owns.
Yeah. But the other two were somewhere by the park. I don't know if they... You say one either or two, just I don't know.
Yeah, I heard.
He also, on his own, I guess, cleaned up that real mess that he had. Lied path on a portal when the tree came down. And what did Bob want to do? Take down three of the branches from another tree?
The real mess is on Iowa that he did clean up.
Oh, with that huge tree? Right. Okay. Well, Rich, can you keep in touch with Mick with regards to completing the work that was done before? Okay? And then now do we need to get bids on that big tree from other outfits? Because that's such a huge tree. Is that something Sandcastle can handle? It didn't sound like it before from what I recall it.
I don't know. He's not there on the...
He can handle it.
He's trying to rich help to do it.
He can handle it.
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. Well...
Rich reached about to do black ops at least one.
But Rich, you said with the last bid he gave us in December that was voted on, that was a vote for cleaning up here on Northland and Chipewa. And there were several other ones in there.
Yeah, that was voted on last year.
He didn't give it to us till December, did he?
No. It was still... I think we decided to complete the order by October to take it through.
Right.
So we voted on that and...
Oh, that part. I'm talking about the second part. That he gave us something, I think it was in December, to do on Chipewa and Northland. And there were several other areas that need...
I don't figure out between now and the next meeting, what we actually contract to get done, what hasn't gotten done from that original contract and what we want to contract to get done that's never been under contract. Because there's a lot.
Okay. Who would like to take this budget? Okay.
So it may not all get done.
But let's find out how much... But let's find out how much he has obligated himself, Mick, for instance, how much he actually has obligated to do.
Information.
Okay.
Some of the information I gave you last meeting, where she has all the appropriations, which is what we can spend.
Okay. Now, with regards to this big tree, that means we need to get bids either from just Sandcastle or more to get that big tree.
He's got a bid to take it down already.
He does, that bid?
It's a Red Indians bid.
It is? Okay. All right.
Then, what you need to do is find out if he's... and like Rich says, he's not gonna have any trouble to do it. We probably just have to find out when he's going to do it. Some of this can't be done in the wintertime.
Okay. So if this is something that we've already accepted from him, we have contracted with him, in other words, then, Rich, you were handling this in the past. Are you willing to continue, you know, dealing with, uh, with Mick with regards to the trees? Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that. Okay. So we can get that...
There is budget money for this year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but just... Didn't I give you the information too last meeting that showed what the budget was published?
Was it ten or fifteen?
Pardon?
Ten or fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, we saw.
It was last year, but I thought we did this thing.
Let me see. Yeah, it's a... Tree trimming itself is fifteen thousand. There's trail maintenance of five thousand. And... I want to see if they put it anywhere else, but I can't remember.
Well, Bob, that big tree on Iowa that is still there?
Yeah.
You do need to take care of that.
Can you run?
The big tree that came down along the creek in Iowa, between that border.
All right.
All that?
Yeah.
That's the only thing in fifteen thousand.
Huh?
Fifteen thousand for trees and five thousand for the trail. And it works, could work for the park.
Okay. So if we can move on from this then, Rich will handle, uh, being in touch with Mick with regards to the work. So can we move on to number 11 now? New business? Okay. And basically, the amendments to the comprehensive plan, we've already discussed, really, or nobody else discussed with me today. So, the amendment for the comprehensive plan. Now, Mike, you had that, uh, final, you had a draft for us all?
Yeah.
You know, the other day?
It's set for, uh, a public hearing at, uh, the next planning meeting, which is the, what, the third? March third?
Okay. Has the notice been gone out for?
Right. Uh, no, there's no need for motion because that comes from the planning permission.
Okay. But is the... has a notice been sent out about the public hearing already?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, next was, uh, leaf pickup, and I know that nobody's picking up leaves currently today, but however, that is something that we're going to have to be working on. So we can either talk about it, look for something, or put this off until another meeting.
Well, I mean, just go ahead and include it in the... leave it put it as an option so the refuse contract is set.
It's in there.
Oh, okay.
Have it set, right? So if we choose not to act on that, we can still act on refuse part of it, right?
I, I think that's...
Okay.
Okay, good. So that's easily done. And then, the street signs, I think we already... Bob answered that you got a, a bunch of them, and we'll start to pop them in. Thank you.
Am I gonna get a deal for?
No, I need to order more posts.
For what?
I need to order more posts.
Okay.
Signs are good.
Okay. All right, good. So now, we can go on to 12, attorney report. Jeff, you're gonna?
Uh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since we're in new business and you know it...
Well...
The short-term rental amendment or ordinances, a lot of detail, and I'm gonna reemphasize that if we don't get ourselves an enforcement officer, then it's gonna go just like so many of our other ordinances that don't get enforced. And I really think we need to address that. I think the short-term rental is something we need, but without enforcement...
I believe, and I can't remember exactly, I think we're working on a job description for the enforcement officer. So if you've got any idea about how you want an enforcement officer or whoever is doing it, since we don't have anything to do with it.
Well, we have certain that the police are enforcing, right? And then we have certain ones that the building inspector, commissioner is in charge of. And I don't know if we wanna combine all those. I mean, I don't think we'd wanna take away from the police, because they certainly are enforcing.
The police would be fine enforcing the ordinances. However, the next title, I think on your agenda here, references a citation that was written, Jeff, how many years ago?
Seven.
Many, many.
Many, many years ago. So it's... My thought is if... why are we gonna go out and write these tickets and enforce these ordinances if we don't have any of that? There's gotta be some teeth in it to where we actually, actually do something with it.
Well, I think that...
We did, and we went to court, and unfortunately, there've been delay after delay.
Well, now we're getting off topic now into another, another thing. So let's go back down just to talking about particular... you mentioned an enforcement officer. So let's discuss just an enforcement, enforcement, code enforcement, individual officer, I don't know what you wanna call it. Um, there are various ways, I guess, we can do this. We do have some things that, you know, the building commissioner would have to enforce. There are some severe things that our police, you know, chief would have to enforce, but then there's probably going to be others that perhaps this individual who could be a code enforcer would have to handle on their own. Um, when I was down in Indianapolis, they... some of the sessions actually addressed code enforcement. It was a huge topic all over the state for all kinds of things. So, you know, and they were jam-packed, standing room only at those sessions where people were talking about how to enforce. So there are various ideas, and some of them even include where a police chief deputizes somebody who's not law enforcement, and their only authority is to go around about codes, to talk, you know, to let people know about the signs, about the short-term rentals and things like this, you know, um, and, and stuff. So then, you know, that, that's one way to do this. Now, for us, perhaps what we need to talk about is, do we actually have money in the budget for an enforcement officer? Is there something that we can pay somebody?
If you're taking away some of the building commissioner's position, then he's technically getting paid to do code enforcement. It's in his job description.
Well, that's not, that's not exactly, that's not exactly correct. Build... a building commissioner enforces certain things, but not all things. Building commissioner, we don't, we don't need to debate it. That's, that's the council matter. But, but it's in the ordinances. It's very clear what the building commissioner is responsible for. And he's not responsible, or he or she is not responsible for every code enforcement in town. For certain ones, yes, but not for everything.
That's not what I said.
Well, I'd probably...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to listen. Okay.
But I do believe that having a code enforcement officer is, is, is a, is a good thing for our community for a lot of reasons, but then it's a matter of, I mean, I, I still don't know what, what our cash flow is, what, how much reserve do we have? Can we, can we hire this position? I have no idea.
Well, you know, you don't wanna hire out of reserves, because if the reserves are on out, you can no longer entertain paying for them.
Just any working budget.
We need to know what's available on it.
The working budget is what I gave you.
Okay.
The appropriations.
Mm-hmm.
The... if you want to go ahead and hire somebody, I would suggest first, finding out what you want this person to do. Find out what you're gonna pay a code enforcement officer, what his jobs are, I mean, what his job...
Is this, is this one of the job descriptions that we're gonna have ready at the end of the month?
It would be, we can get that.
That's what I'm asking, Rich, man. You guys know what you want. You know what, um, you want him to enforce. You're gonna leave the building commissioner and force the building codes, right? And you want this one to do something else. So let me, let, give us some input. Uh, you've got my email. What do you want him to do? And it's not, you know, be a code enforcement officer. That's a problem we've had in the past. We've hired a building commissioner as a building commissioner. There is no job description.
Police commissioners together?
Yes, Bob.
Lay it on, I think we can iron a lot of that out.
Okay. All right. So this is something that we do have to approach, and we have to work on. So how about, if anybody does have ideas of what they, you know, or wants to think about this code enforcement officer, uh, the job descriptions committee is going to be meeting now this month. Oh, in March? I thought it's later this month.
Maybe this February.
It is later this month, I believe. I don't remember which day. But, uh, and then we can work on that. I know that I finished up my things. I could work on a code enforcement, you know, and, uh, and get those on, because Ray and I were both helping on that committee putting together, you know, together with Joe and Brent. Matt dropped out of our committee, and Alex dropped out, but...
We're going to know what you want to do.
Okay.
Why items?
All right. Well, I, I volunteer to work on the code enforcement officer, so I'll entertain. Any thoughts anybody has, email them to me.
I could work with Bob for his...
Please, excellent. That's one?
Send me what you...
Okay.
I bet we could meet with him, and then we can build it all.
Oh, that sounds great. Okay. All right. So Michael?
And I go through the two as well, uh, two gentlemen. One, if you have things, I'll make it Bob, and kind of collectively put it together, work with him, and see if that falls within the guidelines of bringing back for you being , you know?
Okay.
So it's sort of a better sense, I think.
One more thing I would suggest, I don't think you can... We have a building commissioner who's hardly ever in town. So he's not available likely if we have somebody breaking down building codes. I would strongly urge that we find somebody, and I mentioned somebody last time, and I think there's others in town that would be willing to do this. They don't have to be out there every day. We still have signs all over this town, illegal signs.
But one of the problems with the signs is that we never published anything anywhere that we have sign ordinance. So it's very hard for someone to obey the rule if the rule is never told to them. So, I mean, that's, that's serious. We've never published it anywhere.
And that's, that's one of those, those code enforcement, that's not the job of the building commissioner to go pull the signs out?
Well, that's what, though, it leaves a sign in the yard, I would say. It couldn't be...
Well, but there's lots of signs.
I agree with you, yeah.
You have state signs, any sign you have.
But I believe the sign ordinance was published, wasn't it?
Not out on... It's never been on the website, and I don't know if it was ever in the newspaper?
Um, I, I think the fee was the same amount, and that was enacted as a replacement for it, so I don't think we published it because it was, it was a static, a static move.
So we had a public hearing, but didn't we have the timing?
Well, there was a public hearing.
Yes, yes.
So people are, are glad to buy. They often come in and ask Joe for copies of the ordinances.
The, the law does specify that if you satisfy the publication requirement, requirements, um, and public hearing requirements, then the public is presumably on notice.
Okay. Well, one of the things that was, uh, that, you know, the state basically recommends, or at least this organization of cities and towns called AIN now recommends, is that anything that gets discussed at our meetings be published for the people. Um, if, uh, anybody who has a website should have all their notices published soon after the meeting takes place, even in draft form, so that people would have an idea of what's taking place. And we have not been doing that. So that is something that I think we're gonna have to work towards getting done as well, so that, you know, all these notices be up. I mean, it's written black and white in their recommendations, so... any, but, um, let us move on from this, and, you know, now we know that Mike will work on this enforcement together with Bob, so we have that handled here. Let's move on to the attorney reports now. Thank you, Rich.
Uh, the first item, Mike, I wanna, uh, ask action for is, you listed the appointments and announced those. Uh, I would recommend and request that there be a motion, uh, to approve all of those appointments as planned from earlier parties.
Okay. So we can roll all of them together into one approval? Okay.
I'll move to approve from the earlier reading of the, uh, position, uh, appointments for commissioners, confirm the timeframe's noted. I second.
Okay.
There was Ganzie on the table, wasn't there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Okay. Everyone in favor? So this covers, we have a motion to confirm the appointments to the various commissioners and boards and, uh, positions, including the liaisons, uh, for this coming calendar year with the timelines for the various different... and most of them are per year, and, and, you know, one of them was for a six-month period. So do we have an approval?
Which one is six months?
I think the attorneys was a six month.
Correct.
Okay. I had, uh, Michael Lancia on the move, Michael Martinez seconded. I need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay. All five voted aye to approve the appointments.
Okay. I would mention that typically, some of the appointments come with the requirement that there be a note. Uh, certain positions don't require oaths. Uh, the elected officials, uh, positions, our chief of police and the road commissioner, uh, don't have to renew any oaths. I think the citizen faith commission member that did it swore, uh, but I would recommend that the building commissioner, um, have a new oath.
Okay.
I know he's, he's got an old one, doesn't happen right away, there's no problem that carries forward, uh, 'cause he's remaining in that post, but it is, uh, it is desirable that, uh, we do that for record-keeping purposes.
Okay, thank you.
So that if there's a challenge, um, it makes it easier on ourselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the...
Can I ask a question here?
Yes.
Do you plan to put those lists on the internet?
Uh, for these positions? Yes.
I would recommend, since some of us are liaison people...
Yes.
That you look at phone numbers.
Okay. That is very good.
Some people may not wanna call the chief of police, or maybe we'll call maybe the liaison.
Very good. And I will check and see which, if you've got two different phone numbers, which ones you would prefer to have listed, and/or email addresses too. Okay? Okay? Thank you.
All right. Is Charlie?
All right. The agenda I have listed is A is the countervan's violation case against Robert Uriega. That was a topic in the executive session that was recently had a variety of considerations and strategy discussions were shared. I have since that meeting received formal communication from the insurance company that they do not regard any of the affirmative defense counterclaim matters raised in the answer of the defendant in that case to be any that they would assign counsel to or pay for the representation. So therefore, we're now in a position where the status of the case is we're obligated to file our answer to the affirmative defenses. That will include any counterclaims that we would have to make in response to anything that's raised, either by way of answer, affirmative defense, or counterclaim. I think we may be positioned to raise a frivolous claim against them for some of the representations that they've made in their affirmative defenses and counterclaim. We also have a tremendous amount of outstanding discovery as well as discovery that we could and will have to go forward with if the case goes to litigation. There's outstanding discovery that's never been responded to, corruption of documents request, a substantial document request. They're eligible for sanctions. The local rules require that we give them a warning before we take any formal step. We also are in a position where we need to formally compile a total dollar amount of existing attorney's fees that we would be claiming, as well as additional costs, a variety of miscellaneous costs that have been paid by the town. We would want to compile them at this point in time. Once the answer is filed, we either give the judge permission, or the judge's got the power they have, they can demand this at any time anyway, or subject to either the parties, we can ask for our preliminary pretrial conference. Because the agent case, I think the judge would probably convert that into the pretrial conference, because this was, after all, in the nature of an ordinance violation case. The first inquiry the court makes at either an initial pretrial conference or at a final pretrial conference is what are the possibilities of settlement? There have never been any real settlement discussions since the initial months of case being filed. And at that time, there was some exchange that the town councils of the past have never have agreed to accept. And I think the extent of the settlement was to pay the $25 ticket as originally would have been characterized. I've said this before, once an ordinance goes through the ordinance violation bureau, which is our clerk treasurer, and the clerk treasurer's issued notification and given the defendant or the recipient of the citation the opportunity to pay whatever the nominal fine is set forth in the code, in this case it was a $25 fine. They were given the deadline, I think they were given 10 days to pay that amount. They chose not to. The state law says once that happens, you file the ordinance citation with the court and it becomes a matter of litigation. Frequently, in the processing of this type of ticket, you're given an opportunity in front of the court to pay a settlement amount, which would either be the $25 in our case, some ordinances say, if it goes to the next stage, then they have a higher amount. But the court adds on court costs on top of that before they can settle it that way. Then it goes to the trial. So anticipating the concept that we're going to be asked about the possibilities of settlement, I would like to make a request that as kind of attorney, I'd be authorized to actually approach the defendant's attorney, set forth either our answer or that we're going to be answering, that it may include a frivolous lawsuit claim against them, that we're on the urge of filing discovery demands, seeking sanctions against them with the court, and presenting them with a compilation of attorney's fees and costs that presently exist, and see if there's any interest in creating a settlement. So I would like authorization to go forward with that play from the council. As you know, we cannot take any formal action, actually any action of any kind in an executive session, so nothing like that has happened. And I would move to authorize the town attorney to act on our behalf and best to have his legal opinion relative to asking for discovery or other needed information and/or settlement.
Any running to second or discuss questions?
No second.
Okay. Pam. Pam seconds. Now, are there any questions or any discussion from anybody else on the council?
Upon getting all this information together, you report back to us for, pardon? Upon getting all the information, you know, that updates are, the next time council, do you have to update or?
Yeah, I can do that through the town's president. If I receive an immediate response, sometimes it's, you know, along lines of Coachella and the like, but other times they'll entertain things or they'll try to negotiate things at least and.
Okay. And what kind of timeline do you foresee for this?
Well, it'll coincide with the filing of an answer, which we have existing deadline on.
Okay. Just out of curiosity.
Just in a couple of weeks' time. I don't even recall that date yet presently. But I would anticipate that the jury hearing from me within that time span.
Okay.
And it may also depend on the response. Mr. Uriega's attorney has had substantial health problems and so he's not an easy person to reach by phone and not always responsive, you know, otherwise.
Okay. Any other questions to comment? Okay. Then I put it to a vote. Mike moved that we authorize the town attorney to pick gunning to approach the opposing council with regards to, and speaking about settlements, discovery costs, sanctions, you know, and a frivolous lawsuit. I'm sorry, I'm being very unclear. Maybe we can write something more clear for John. On the motion, okay? Please. Okay. All in for vote here? Pardon?
Yes, I do.
Did you understand?
No.
Who's second?
All right. Pam seconded. Oh, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Five ayes. All approved. Does Mr. Gunning go forward? Mr. Gunning, can you help John write out the?
Yes.
Okay, that motion, then we're done. Okay. And your second?
Item B is the proposed litigation against the military official of Michigan. I think the stats discussion or exchange of information, technically under the law, receiving information by a core or a majority of the board or an agency in the local government is taking action. And that's the only action step they're allowed to take in the executive session. But the point of the discussion was that we need to collect more data before we go out and look for a licensed attorney in the state of Michigan. I am not.
Well, let me, I researched this a little bit, so let me back up and ask a couple of questions about it. So I found, and I think, Rich, you brought it up when we had the executive session. I was able to find it in their, in, to the state of Michigan. I think it was in the secretary of state's office or their board accounts that had the old records that were submitted by Michigan, Michigan, where you could see that, that place holder for the monies that were collected over the 40 years or whatever. And then that went away after they signed an agreement and started using Michigan City for their water provider, but do, that's when it left the records. And that was like 2017 or 2018. Prior to that, it was always posted when they stood there to know that the state of Michigan. So, I mean, and it was, it varied a little bit. It was like three or 400 thou, 400,000 or just plus or minus so dollars. But then, here's where I'm just confused then, because, I mean, I'm just not sure if this dog hunts or not, because if you read the agreement, our water agreement, and you look at section 4249, it says, "The net surplus thus determined," that's what we're talking about here, the surplus, "shall be divided so that there shall be allocated for the benefit of the customers of Michigan Shores, Indiana, a proportion thereof equal to the percentage of gallons used by the Indiana customers relative to the total gallons." Okay. So, you know, that's again, the 400,000, let's just say. "The amounts will be set aside and used by the second party, which is Michigan Shores, for the benefit of such Indiana customers for the upgrading of their distribution system. Such upgrading to be subject to the approval of the Indiana Water Authority, and it shall not be interpreted to involve any manpower." So basically, what they're talking about is they have money in escrow for us to provide for material, not people, but for material, pipes, pumps, hybrids, whatever, to upgrade our water system, which we never did. And so the $400,000 just kind of was there, and when we left and went to Michigan City, since we never, the way I read this, since we never took advantage of it, it just went away.
No.
Well?
Let me add something.
Okay.
I do have records where the water service in this area, that several of the monies were replaced.
Why didn't?
Since diagnosed since 2004.
Why didn't he ask for money?
That's what we were trying to research, because I believe if you read why they're in there, they're supposed to be paid direct, are they not?
It says the Indiana Water should, they have to prove it.
Approved.
It says, again, I'll reread it, "Such upgrading could be subject to the approval of the Indiana Water Authority." So if we did this upgrading in 2004, I don't really understand why we can sit down with the Indiana Water Authority then, but nonetheless.
Steve did any of that some money from that time. I've got the records on.
"The upgrading of this distribution system involves land power, but it's only material which are set aside for grading the Indiana distribution system by paying in a certain direction of the second party, directly to the contractor who performed the work as directed by the second party." So they're not paying us, they're paying our contractors.
I see.
"In the written determination of the net surplus should be made annually at the close of the fiscal year of the Water Authority, and such written determination shall be furnished to the second party, which is Michigan Shores, within 90 days." And that's it. It doesn't say anything about if the agreement is severed, which it was, what happens to that money or anything else. So I just don't really, I'm having a hard time seeing what, what's being recourse here. It sounds great, it sounds like a magical leprechaun pot of money, but I just don't see what, what, do we have any legal recourse to say that they need to just pay us anything for that? I mean, it's for pipes and stuff, matter of fact.
Please.
If I may add, there's a provision in the original contract that obligates them to annually make a report as to the extent of the surplus or excess. And that's the initial mode of contention, because during their scandal, where they had a clerk or treasurer stealing money, they suspended that.
Yeah, that's what I researched, Jack, that it was in Michigan, in the state of Michigan Board of Accounts. And, I mean, it was there until they stopped and switched over to Michigan City. And then, and then we had already canceled at that point, and then it wasn't reported anymore. But it was recorded until then, every year that I posted.
"Their obligation was to supply those reports and that amount of money, those dollar figures, to this council." So initially, one of the theories was, are they hiding the true amount under the guise of their scandal that they endured? And from that period on, to my knowledge, there was never, ever a disclosure of anything. There was no.
I was able to find the total amount for every year.
Then the contract obligation is for them to supply that to the town. And so in the initial instance, they violated the contract because they failed to perform. Then the second question is, did work, when they reported to the state, was that done in a fashion that would have been supporting this contract or not? And then you get into the element of potential fraud.
Okay. I just, I'm having a hard time understanding why we're talking about this in 2020, when this goes bad. What, did we switch Michigan City water from there, 2016, 2017?
2015.
2015.
I guess I'm, I'm just struggling to understand why we're talking about this four years later.
Because it's still an open matter.
They did give us a report, and I can't remember what year it was, they had been keeping what they were to provide us in a separate account. And then from one year to the next, it totally disappeared, didn't it, Rich? You worked me on that.
So that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Not when, not when the contract ended, we're going back to before the contract ended, long before it ended.
All right. Well, that, I don't, I don't know that, you're right, I don't know that with the state of Michigan and their, and their recordings, it's all in there. The contract, it's just for, it's just for hybrids and different things. And they were to have approved it. It's not like they're going to write us a check for $1,000, even if, even if it was still in place, it would be, we had to have an upgrade done and demonstrate, and they would pay our contractor. So if we have some of those fees, then we can document it and demonstrate it, that's one thing. But if, but otherwise, we're just kind of spinning our wheels, in my opinion. I don't see what, there's any recourse here.
They were not keeping track of it. We've had several upgrades in the water system.
Even if, let's just assume that they didn't keep track of it. They didn't keep track of it. Terrible record-keeping. Do we have any charges for we upgraded our water system that would have applied anyway? And if we did, why didn't we ask for it like that?
There was negotiations every time with the, I can't remember his name, Forrest McCann. He was their water superintendent. And they, Steve always negotiated with them on it because that's what they had to do to start finding out which was materials and which was labor or whatever was going to be paid. Now, I have all those upgrades in there. That I have. What I don't have is how much did we receive each time and how much did we owe? Would you go to somebody and say, I need so much money, we're going to deliberate, how much are you going to pay for it? We shouldn't have to do that. We didn't know how much was from, what was it, two or five or six? We didn't know how much money we could ask for, because there was nothing in there, because they took it out. It just disappeared. The whole account just disappeared.
Well, didn't when we met with their president, they even claimed a fire destroyed all the records?
I believe so, yes.
So it wasn't just the confiscation of money by the treasurer? But when we met with their president, he sat back in his room and said, "We're not going to pay."
When was that?
What?
When was that? A year ago?
Well.
You're on a nap two years ago.
I'm trying to think though. He, before that, I would say at least five years ago, he said, said about the lawyers, why don't we sit down and try to work something out? He didn't want to admit he owed money or they owed money, but he almost did. But he just said, "We're not going to pay."
But do, okay. But did we have a list of contractor names and invoices that we paid that should have been paid from that account?
Yeah.
For?
Where was the lot?
For pipes and hybrids and valves and pumps.
I think that's what we find is that, well, they're supposed to.
There was a lot. Came all the way down.
Well, there's. There was sunset too.
When you guys, did they put in fire hydrants when they put in units?
How long ago was it?
That's been a while.
Seven years ago?
Like at that time, they were under obligation.
Yeah.
To maintain our. Like at that time, we, they were under obligation to maintain our...
I just, Jeff, what's the statute of limitations of this stuff?
Well, it would depend on the theory that was used and the parties or number of defendants. But if, the longest one will expire this year, near the end of the year.
The longest one being, what's that, in the year?
That's Michigan statute of limitations.
Well, I still say that we're not doing that, I need to contact you. I gave, after we met that time, I made a motion, I said, come on, that wasn't a meeting officially.
Well, I'd be all for that, if we could have an organized presentation with details and information that says on June the 14th, we paid ABC Mechanical $15,000 for X linear feet of pipe and 25 fire hydrants, and, and we paid for this, and we should have reimbursed for this. If we can make that case, then that's fantastic. But if, but if it's just like, well, we met and we thought, and well, maybe we don't have anything written down, and we don't, and it's, nobody's got anything, we're just wasting our time.
John, when they did pay us in the past, weren't there times where they just gave us money? I mean, we...
I don't know.
Follow you on this, right, Steve?
No. Don't let it find out, let's go through the old general ledgers.
So can we make any kind of a decision on whether we proceed with this right now or does this still have to be put off, I mean, further research?
My part was just to be a report to say that we just paid it more than we had.
Okay.
I'd say you can keep it rolling around and go business, and if somebody can come up with some facts, then that's one thing, but it sounds like a CSI investigation.
Any other comments, Pam?
Is John going to try to look up the itemized invoices? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, we, in order to proceed with any kind of thing, then, we need to have those invoices to show something that we've made and they didn't.
They did RFPs, and I don't know whether the materials and labor are separated on them. But I know they did RFPs and they opened the bids, because I remember working with them when they opened the bids. But I can't, because we're up and down.
Okay, so shall we pull this, put this off then? Or would you be able to look, would you be able to pull up some of that information, John?
Well, I would then, how much money at the time?
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm...
I don't know, I've got several things that have to be done. I'm working on the code right now, bringing it up to state.
Excellent.
So, and I'm working on the annual report, financial report that has to be done by March 1st.
Okay.
And then I'm finishing our full state of the year right now.
Okay, so how?
Anything else you want me to do?
Then how about we put this off until, you know, next month, and then we can bring it back up again next month? Okay? I think that sounds reasonable. Do you agree? Okay, so we're going to table this discussion in any way, until, until next month. And then we will then, yes, please.
You said seven years statute of limitation given to the calendar year or like a June, July, seven years from that month?
I think it's a June or July this year.
Yeah, that's a good idea, thank you.
Michigan year ends starts June 14th.
Okay. All right. Now, we've got, we've come almost, it is 9 o'clock, we're just about 9 o'clock, so any?
Madam President, one last thing. I know you approved a six-month period of...
For your contract.
Accounts does require that the attorney contracts be in writing.
Okay.
I would like to propose is that there be a letter agreement extending the old contract by three months or to March 15 with all the same terms and conditions that they currently exist. That way, we're covered for January and February and to March, and then theoretically, I can have a underwritten contract for the rest of the period.
Okay.
To present at the next meeting. But if we can do that, just with a letter of extension for the three-month period and have the council authorize you to sign it.
Okay. All right, I need a motion then? Okay, I need a motion to, for me to write this letter? Okay, Mike Glancioni, moves to second to the extension of the contract. Martina, second, you know, write letter. Okay. I need a vote, all in favor? Aye, okay, that's any names? No? Okay, five ayes approved. Okay, we'll get this done right away. So now, on to miscellaneous business, anything else anybody needs to bring up? Going, going, gone, okay. Any communications, John?
You have one.
Okay, nothing else came in, okay. Public comment? Okay, no public comment. Council comment? Okay. In that case, I will ask for motion to it during our meeting. Mike moves to close meeting. Second to adjourn our meeting. I think Rich and you did it at the same time, so I did it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, five ayes. We adjourned our meeting, it is now 9:05 PM. All right, thank you all.